The planning board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Ed Mielsche.
If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on October 16th and one on November 20th. And we're continuing our monthly meeting schedule. If there's a need to have a meeting in between, we can always set one, but for now, we're going to continue with the monthly meeting dates. We apparently have several minutes to catch up on. I'm sorry Pam. The first one is May 15th. And so, Michael, John, and John, and Craig were here for that one with me. So do I have a motion to approve the May 15th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yeah, abstain, abstain.
Okay, thank you. And we have our June 19th meeting. Let's see, it looks like all of, all of us were here? Am I hearing something? Okay. I'm sorry. So, Michael, John, John, Craig, Steve, and Ed were here with me for the June 19th meeting. So, do I have a motion to approve the June 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. And then last, we have our July 17th minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review them? Okay, so, Michael, Steve, John, and Ed were here. Sorry, John Eichman and Ed were here. Do I have a motion to approve the July 17th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And I have, yep, I have a couple of abstentions. Okay. We are caught up. I'm sorry Pam. Our first, first, excuse me, item tonight is an adjourned public hearing for Gasland East Fishkill site plan on Route 82. And I think, do we have, we have everything we need Pam to open, open the permit hearings as well as the, the two permit hearings? Okay. So do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for Gasland and open the permit hearings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Lapina with the Jason Companies representing the applicant this evening. We also received two additional receipt cards today at our office that I'd like to provide to you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Following the last meeting, we were asked to provide the board some additional information at the request. One of the items that we were asked to follow up on was to provide the board a copy of a maintenance agreement, or proposal between the applicant and a certified maintenance provider of the storm filter system for the property. That was provided to the town as part of our last seminal. We were also asked to provide the town a, kind of a written work plan by their environmental contractor for the project. That was prepared by American Petroleum Equipment and Construction Company. I know the board had some questions at the last meeting regarding that process. I have James Card with APECO here this evening, who is going to review with the board what that environmental remediation process is going to consist of. And we had updated our plan to reflect some additional comments that we received from your town consultants, which included the submittal of a floodplain development permit as well.
Okay, any significant changes to the site plan?
No significant changes to the site plan.
Okay. And you had, I think, I can't remember if you had it for the last meeting, but you have your ARB approval now?
Yes.
Okay, do you have the drawings with you? Because they're, that public hearing runs concurrent with ours. So if you could just put them up if anybody from the public wants to look at them.
I thought there was an issue with the fill. Was that still outstanding, or is that?
The comments were in the floodplain development permit letter from the town's stormwater officer.
Assuming you're referring to the elevations for the project?
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
Wanted to know if that was included in that, that list of issues. Okay.
So we, we have ARB approval for these plans.
Okay.
That's been presented before the board.
Okay.
If the board may, if I could turn a little Michael Card to discuss the environmental remediation process that's going to take place.
Sure. Before you do that, can we just address, we had received, I think for the last meeting, we had not yet declared lead agency. We've now reached the end of the comment period for all of the, everyone on the circulation. So Michelle, can we make the motion now to declare lead agency, or do we need to wait till we?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so if that's all right, before, before we do that, let's just, unless anybody has any objection, do we have a motion to make the East Fishkill Planning Board the lead agent for this application?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So with that completed, one of the comments we received back from the town of LaGrange was that they had seen, I think, some sort of, had discussion with you on some sort of conceptual plan. We also have now received a letter from the applicant representing, there's nothing planned right now on the parcels that are also owned by the contiguous and owned by the same company. Is that still correct?
You are correct. The parcel in LaGrange is owned, a single-family residential, only portion of it is commercial. There was informal meeting to discuss a contemplated rezoning for a multifamily. The applicant, as indicated in the letter, has a subdivision of town of LaGrange, which is going through an arduous process of trying to construct. They are just going to dedicate their resources and forego any project in the town of LaGrange for quite some time.
Okay, so you have no intention of developing either the parcel next to ours that's in East Fishkill, or the parcel beyond that that's in the town of LaGrange?
Correct, but at this time, once again, there's no plans. He's focusing his efforts on his subdivision. He's got a 55-block subdivision of town of LaGrange he's constructing.
Okay.
Okay, but if I may.
Sure.
The, at some later date, there might be something developed there. So the question then becomes, when and if that date ever arrives, is there a plan to change the egress and ingress for this gas station?
If there is a project in the town of LaGrange, that access would come off of Arthur'sburg Road.
I think, Mike, what you mean is, we've talked, and we've talked with the applicant several times about the fact that there is a parcel next to this one that has access to the light that's kind of shared by Duncan Dotos, that we've said if that parcel is developed in the future, we would expect to relook at the ingress and ingress for this station.
Correct. I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the town of LaGrange parcel. I'd like to correct myself. So, part of the DOT approval, or future approval, I think they've already provided some correspondence earlier, is the redevelopment of that adjoining parcel that would require that access at the light, and both, the DOT would revisit the access on our property. And they would like to see access from the light to our property and eliminate the left turns.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If we want to go ahead, go ahead.
Michael?
Hi, good evening, folks. My name's Mike Carr. I'm a geologist with American Petroleum. We do a significant amount of environmental work, consulting and contracting for Gasland Petroleum. I guess with the limited amount of environmental information we have on this property, the goal here is to go out, conduct a soil and groundwater investigation as part of the project, which would entail a geoprobe investigation, where we'd actually physically go out, collect soil and groundwater samples, have them analyzed in a laboratory, and determine the nature and extent of any residual hydrocarbons that may be on the, on the property. When Gasland does, you know, when they get approved, then they decide to go ahead with the construction, we would be out there also screening soils in the field as they're excavating. This work would be done under the supervision and guidance of DEC as well. You know, we work very well with DEC Region 3. Our company is actually a, we're one of their contractors. We actually do work for, for DEC, for spill response. Based on determining what the nature and extent is, we would work with DEC and come up with a remedial action plan where we would actually go out, excavate soils, take post-excavation samples, have those analyzed in a laboratory, and be able to, you know, hopefully get to the endpoint where our soil samples would indicate that we've gotten the soils down to, you know, non-detect or meet CP51, which is the soil guidance for New York State. So, that's it in a nutshell. Happy to take any questions.
Where does the remediate soil go?
It depends what we're proposing. Typically, we use thermal desorption, where we'll actually take the soil, have a licensed hauler, have it characterized and accepted into a waste disposal facility. Typically, we use ESMI, which is environmental soil management. They're up in Fort Edward, New York. They're a licensed facility. It's good for, for the responsible party. They basically release them of the liability as opposed to going to a landfill. And they actually roast the soil, so all the volatile organics will be burned off and they'll reuse the fill, you know, mix it with asphalt or whatever, certified clean.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So, the way you're describing this, this is all, this is all future process. So you haven't done any testing at the site right now?
Well, I know there's an open spill number, but no, we would, we would actually go out and do this soil and groundwater investigation beforehand, determine the nature and extent so we know what we're dealing with before we actually go in there for construction. That's typically what we do. It's standard operating procedure at a gas station, particularly redevelopment of a distressed property.
Do you set a project schedule in advance, or is it really pretty much driven until you get a clean sample?
Well, I've been doing this a long time, and I'll tell you, every site is different. And sometimes it's cut and dry. You have a limited defined area you can go in, you can excavate it, and you move on your merry way. Then you have other situations where you go in and you don't know what you're, you're going to find. It turns out to be a little bit more significant. And basically, at that point, you know, DEC is on site, and we're working in their direction. And we, we remove, you know, typically up to, if we have to, up to the property line or up to DOT right away. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with the requirements of our local law, Tom, I'm looking at you, is this, is this sufficient?
Yes.
Or do we need something from the DEC to show that the spill is closed?
Right. No, as long as it's listed by DEC as a spill site, that makes it eligible for the special permit to reuse it.
Okay. And so then, are, are resolution conditions on this spill being closed to?
Yes. Oh, they have to complete it.
Okay.
In any of our information, we're going to, we would provide a, a, a post, you know, a post-activity summary report or a spill closure report. We would provide that to DEC, and they would utilize that in their decision-making process to close out the spill.
Okay.
I just have a question, and I don't know if, Chris, maybe you can help out. The well, there is a well on site?
There's an existing well on site.
That you intend to use, or?
We do not intend on using that well. That well would be abandoned.
Okay. So you really don't know what the water quality is going to be yet on the site? You've got nothing to sample at this point?
We don't have anything to sample at this point.
Has the well that exists been sampled? Just to kind of get any idea, and I don't know what the depth is. Is it a rock well, shallow well?
We have not sampled the well that's on the site of a.
Do you know anything about that well, whether it's rock or shallow, or?
I don't know anything about the well because based on our initial dialogue we had with the Department of Health, that the existing setback, same form, we have the investigation of that well.
So what happens in a scenario you drill a well and it's contaminated?
Typically, you, what we would do in this situation is we increase the depth of our casing. And we've typically done 100 to 150 feet of casing until we get a quality source. And if we do encounter any sort of contaminated.
We need to come to the mic.
We incorporate a.
We need Chris to.
Chris?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Just, put on mine, just start.
Typically for.
I know folks in the room can hear you, but we're not picking you up.
Okay. For remedial sites, and we've done a number of these over the years with Gasland and American Petroleum, when we are drilling a new well for the site, we extend the well casing 100 to 150 feet into the ground, as opposed to typically 40 to 50 feet, which is normally done for residential and commercial wells. The intent is, one is protection of the water supply from any leftover or minimal contamination that may be in there so that it doesn't penetrate into the, into the bedrock well. If there is any sort of contamination, obviously, that's still running in the well, we would introduce carbon filters, which are customary for the removal of MTBE in water supplies.
Now, in that event, in this worst-case scenario, you have to do that. Do you have room in the building, or is that going to be?
Yes. There, there would be room in the building for a water treatment supply room. Typically there, you know, you need about 100 square feet for your water treatment supply.
Michelle, do we have the documentation in the file and the existing open spill, or do we need to make sure we have that?
What we have is just that, we have the spill number in the AAF form, and then there's a little description of, of some of the contamination in the AAF form, but that's about it.
There's, there's also additional documentation, a letter from the DEC to Gasland dated February 7, 2017, about an additional investigation required on the site as well.
Okay. But that's something that you won't do until you're ready to be, to move forward with the site, site plan development, site development?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I, there was a point raised about.
Who are you asking a question of?
Actually, Chris. That the maintenance program arbitrarily picked a five-year period. Can we assume that that was just an arbitrary, and that there will be, you know, that that will be maintained as long as needed?
Are we talking about the stormwater?
Yes, I'm sorry, as we're cleaning up the last set of it.
Yeah, we, we got into greater detail in terms of that with the biannual inspections that we provided in the proposal.
Right.
The changing of the filters that would take place every two to three years based on the amount of sediment deposition within the filter. We also spoke of the removal of any sort of water that's sitting within the pump and that occurring on a two-to-three year basis as well.
Right, but the point was that it was like, it looked like it was a point in time that said, five years out, boom. But if they're still needed after that, they would be, continue to be maintained.
Correct.
Longer than five years. It was just kind of an arbitrary end to the document. Thank you.
They provided us a five-year contract, which they would renew every five years.
We might be able to incorporate that into maybe an operating permit for this particular site. Well, we usually with these, we do a stormwater maintenance agreement and easement, which is recorded. And what that agreement provides is that they'll keep it maintained and upon their fair to do so, the town can have it maintained and back-charge it to the property, which administrate, of course.
Okay.
I think that's what Pete was referring to as well.
Right, that's what we usually do.
He wanted a copy of the proposal first.
But I think, Scott, in your experience, the frequency of the cleaning out of the filter and checking, you have no concern over that? That sounds right.
I couldn't speak to that. You know, it all depends on the site, you know?
Okay.
What's being generated.
Yeah.
All right. So is there a reason to check it sooner, or is there, are you comfortable with the way it's proposed? I think it was, what, every six months it was?
Every, every six months, they're, they're checking it.
I would say we start with that.
It seems reasonable, but is there a reason to do it more often? I don't.
I would say not initially, anyway.
Probably have to wait and see how, how it looks after the first couple of runs.
Yeah, we, we ask the gentleman for twice a year. He does have sites where he does it just once a year for inspections. So, we incorporated an additional inspection.
Is that something you typically also provide to the town then as part of the stormwater agreement you're talking about, Tom, or is that something separate?
Well, I mean, the whole administration supervision of it will fit into our regular stormwater operation. We have a stormwater management officer on staff with the town who's charged with the responsibility to do the annual inspections. We have to file an annual report with DEC. So however, this system starts to filter and do what it's supposed to do. It'll be monitored, and if they have to clean it more frequently, they'll be required to do that. If it's less frequently, that would be adjusted also. But there's a whole, you know, program in place, and every year, we have to report our efforts and inspections to DEC. Otherwise, the town's in violation, in which case, then they would be in violation. So.
Okay.
The town could certainly be copied on all inspection reports for this as well.
Any, any other questions or comments for, or sorry, anyone, before I ask for comments from our professionals? Dave, do you want to go over? I know you had an updated comment letter.
Please. Our comments, traffic comments were addressed sufficiently. I would note that the, any additional access, I understand that it's going to be covered under a special mode or special conditions of this approval. That's satisfactory, and I think that's advisable.
Okay. Any other items from your comment letter?
Uh, no.
Okay. Michelle, anything?
I think you guys have covered most of my comments. The only other one I had was just that the floodplain administrator provided you some comments that just still need to be addressed, or I don't know if they've been addressed since he supplied you with the letter on September 6th, but, and you have that letter.
Yes, and we've reached out to, obviously, there's a difference of opinion between the wetland consultant based on DEC regs and the town consultant. So we're reaching out to Army Corps to validate who's right or wrong and what process is required.
Thank you. Is there any expected significant change to the plan? Any change to the plan based on the comments from the letter? What would the mitigation be?
There are no changes to the plan expected. The, the discussion on the increases in fill from our original plan to our new plan was related when we added the additional parking that we spoke about during our meeting. And we also incorporated the actual size and location of the wastewater treatment unit in the project, which incorporates the additional fill for this project.
Okay. Anything else, Michelle?
No.
Scott, anything else?
I think, the only other comment as far as the floodplain development permit was the outfall.
Correct.
Into the creek that you'll have to address.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to give Rick a call. I'm not particularly, I don't particularly understand the comment. We have a, we're showing fill over the pipe right now. I'm not sure if he's looking for a special type of fill or something.
Is also, is there a head wall of any sort, or just a flared inlet?
There's a flared inlet. Well, there's no flaring. It's a, it's a, it's a pipe going into the stream. There's no flared inlet.
But there's no head wall?
There's no head wall.
But a concern might be, you know, scouring around that pipe. What's there to secure that pipe, that you don't get scouring in event of a storm?
So is he, so I'm, I'm assuming that he's probably looking for a riprap or something of that nature?
Well, I think that's what has to be ironed out.
Okay.
Whatever their resolution is.
Correct.
Scott, is that something that needs to be worked out before we could close the public hearing? I don't know how significant a change it would be. I'm not, I don't.
No, I wouldn't think. I mean, it's just, we have to address the comment. It might be riprap around the apron. It might be a concrete head wall. It's whatever the engineer and.
Either.
Rick can agree to, and, and the Army Corps, if in fact, they're involved, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments before we open for public comment? Okay, is there anyone who would like to offer comment on our June public hearing, sorry, on our site plan for Gasland East Fishkill site plan? Anyone wants to offer comment? Going once? Going twice? Okay, Michelle, I'm not seeing anything that would keep the public hearing open, or we?
I have nothing on my end, but are we keeping it open? Were we keeping?
I don't think.
Okay.
I know there's litigation, so I was just wondering if we were holding it open for that.
Well, I think the applicant, we've asked to acknowledge the ongoing litigation several times. You know that we can't, we can't allow.
I'd just like to update the board on that. We don't have a decision yet, so obviously, the presumption is that the law is valid unless the, until, less than until the court otherwise declares, and there's no restraining order. So, we can proceed. We've had the applicant acknowledge the, that issue pending. And obviously, whatever consequences that might present, should the law be overturned, is going to be accepted and assumed by the applicant, so.
We can, we continue to assume the, the risk.
Okay. So, does this prevent us from issuing a decision, though? Are we going to bump up potentially against?
No, there's no stay. There's no stay of the court.
Okay.
Right.
All right. So, does the board have any concern or question regarding closing the public hearing?
Nope.
No.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll put this on for decision, Chris, at our, at our next meeting. That'll be October 16th.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Barnum Spock lot line realignment on West Hook Road.
Just don't forget any.
Set up an obstacle force for you.
Aye, that's fine. No problem. I think everybody should be doing cartwheels for these guys. The place has been an eyesore my entire life.
And that is the only plan to get it cleaned?
Good.
So Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll get a copy of your plan up on the projector, I think momentarily. Do you want to give us a quick overview on what you're requesting? It's a public hearing, so just, I know we've had discussion before, but just go ahead and introduce it for us.
Sure. I'm just looking, looking to expand the property. My house is like six feet off the road, and I have .9 acres. I want to acquire .84 acres from my neighbor's backyard, basically, to make my backyard larger and more conforming.
Okay. And it's more conforming, not fully conforming, but it's definitely bettering the.
It's right. It's like 1.77 acres instead of .9. So it's more conforming, and they're still conforming. So it's, it should be, make everybody happier, I guess.
Okay. Do we have any?
With no detriment.
Right, no detriment.
So.
Do we have any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Michelle, any, any questions or comments?
I think this is pretty straightforward. Okay.
Scott?
Straightforward.
None for me.
Tom?
None.
All right. This is a public hearing, so do we have anyone from the public who'd like to offer a comment on our Barnum Spock lot line realignment? Going once? Twice?
Twice, three times.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to close the hearing for Barnum Spock lot line? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Because this is a fairly simple request, we do have a resolution for tonight. Does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure. Okay, resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval. Subdiv, name of subdivision, lot, lot line realignments between the lands of Barnum and Spock. Laura Barnum, Kevin Keegan, Kathleen, and George Spock are the applicant's. Location is West Hook and Van Wyck Lake Road. Resolution offered by Planning Board John Cutler. Whereas the applicant has applied for subdivision approval for a realignment of their two lots, and whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under seeker for which a coordinated review was not undertaken. Whereas the planning board, after carefully reviewing all of the submitted materials and documentation for the proposed, proposal determined that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and accordingly adopted a negative declaration on September 18, 2018. Whereas a public hearing was held on September 18, 2018. Whereas the planning board finds that there will most likely be no other changes or approvals required between the preliminary and the final plat, that a final public hearing is not necessary, and final approval can be granted simultaneously. And whereas the applicant has submitted an application for preliminary and final approval. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues a preliminary and final subdivision approval for the above project known as represented on the map entitled Lot Line Adjustment Between Barnum, Keegan, and Spock, prepared by Carney Rhine Vault dated July 2, 2018, and revised through July 16, 2018. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following modifications and conditions, which are deemed necessary prior to the applicant's submission of a subdivision plat in final form. Number one, no work shall commence on the site until the subdivision plat is filed with the county clerk. Number two, the plat will be subject to the approval of any deeds by the town attorney. Number three, the plat will contain the written approval and/or certification of no jurisdiction of the Duchess County Health Department before it's signed by the chairperson. Number four, since no new lots were created, no recreation fee is due. Number five, all the terms and conditions of the negative declaration adopted herein is incorporated herein and deemed to be conditions hereof. Is there any others, right? No others?
Just a minute.
Conditions?
Do we have a negative declaration embedded in this? Then do we need one, Michelle?
No, because I think this is actually really a type-two action.
Right.
I don't think it, I think you can actually just.
We can.
Should we just strike number five?
So we can strike number four?
Yeah, strike.
Yeah, strike five could be stripped.
Okay.
Do we need to say it's a type-two in the?
You can just, yeah, you can just say that it's really a.
We had it as an unlisted action. We wanted to change it, consider it to be a type-two action under seeker? Okay. Bear with us.
That's okay.
Okay. Any other, any other?
And I think you just get rid of and accord, the next whereas clause after the type-two, just get rid of the and accordingly adopted negative declaration. You're not adopting a negative direction, declaration. Seeker just ends because it's type-two. There's no, no further processing.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And July 16 is the last date that your plan was revised?
Yes.
Okay.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of this adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, in votes as follows. John Cutler?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too, guys.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Foster Road Professional, Route 82 and Foster Road.
I'm Basmi Chandani, and I am the agent for.
I'm going to have you just hold on one second for us. We're going to bring your plan up, and I'm going to check with Pam so we can get your public hearing opened. Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing? Do I have a motion to open the Foster, excuse me, the Foster Road Professional public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I'm Basmi Chandani. I'm the agent for Dr. Sinha and for Foster Road Professionals. Basically, the house that is on Route 82, 1036 Route 82, was a house that belonged to somebody who passed away, and the Foster Road Professionals acquired the property before she passed away. And at that time, it was determined that this property would become commercial, because that whole area is a commercial property. But since then, there has been a thought that maybe this house needs to become a caretaker's house for the, for the medical, you know, for the medical office. They have two buildings there, they have quite a few physicians, and they're going to do a 365 day, it's becoming like an urgent care. So they need somebody on site to mind the buildings, to open and close, lock the doors, and keep everything going. So now, according to some provisions that I have here, East Fishkill provisions, it's possible if the building is not any more than 1800, 2000, I think it's 1800 and some square feet, that the building can become a caretaker's building. And so that's what we, and that would be in a B1 zone. So we are requesting that this house become the caretaker's house, and, you know, it'd be helpful for the, for the doctors' offices.
Okay. Okay. And I think you all, oh, go ahead.
This is really probably apropos of nothing, but it almost sounded like, given a 24-by-7 emergency care facility, is this going to be somebody who's in charge of grounds, or is this going to be a doctor or a medical person?
No, it'd be somebody that works in the practice.
Okay.
That would, you know, have, be like a, be a caretaker.
Okay. So it's going to be rotated, then? It's, will they take turns staying there? Or is it going to be one person?
No, no, somebody will be living there.
Okay.
And he will take care of the building.
Okay.
Essentially, they're just going to open and close the building, and the doctors would come in to see patients or whatever.
Correct, correct. Usually, they'll get a phone call that there's somebody who needs some urgent care, and then whichever doctor is required at that time. They have quite a, quite a, you know, quite a large number of different professional doctors there, so somebody or the other would be called in just in time for the patient to come, and this person would go and open the building. It's just like an urgent care, it's a walk-in type of facility.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to take us down.
No, that's okay.
Side street, I was just kind of curious.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, you went to the A R B, architectural?
I've been to them. They approved the plans, they approved, you know, what we, how we were going to change the building, the windows we're going to put in. They've approved everything, yes.
Okay. And do we have the, do we have elevations for that? Or, Michelle, was that not required? Because this is technically a residence, it's not really required.
It's an existing building.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? I think it's pretty straightforward.
There was one remaining issue, and I think this too is kind of a side issue, is, was any more immediate parking planned?
No.
Because I knew there was, okay.
No, not at all.
It will be very much kept as a house.
Exactly, like, exactly, everything that's there, it's not any larger, any smaller, it's exactly the way it is. It's just going to be fixed up, so it looks presentable, and right now, it really doesn't look so presentable, that's all.
And the pool is either closed?
It's gone.
It's going to be closed.
It's gone.
So, yeah, that was the list of questions.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right. Michelle, anything we need to cover on this one?
No.
Scott? Tom?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on the Foster Road Professional request for their conversion of accessory unit? Okay, I'm getting the, I'm getting the head shakes, all right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we also have, because this is a fairly straightforward request, we have a resolution for this evening as well for that. Does someone want, Mike, you want to offer that one?
Resolution granting special permit. Name of the application is Foster Road Professional. Name of the applicant is Robbie Sinha. Location is 1036 Route 82. Resolution offered by planning board member Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for a special permit to allow a caretaker unit for an approved medical facility in an existing house on the property, which is located in a B1 zone, and whereas the board deems this a use allowed with a special permit granted by the planning board, and whereas the board adopted a negative declaration on August 19, 2008.
So that's going to be, excuse me, that's going to say whereas the proposed action is a type-two action under seeker, and then you're going to strike, strike the next whereas clause?
Whereas the action is a type-two action under seeker.
Under seeker, yep.
Okay.
Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action under seeker, and then the next whereas clause to strike.
No, strike the negative, okay.
Which a coordinator for you has not undertaken, that gets struck too.
Yeah.
Okay. So whereas the applicant has submitted an amended site, final site plan, and the board finds that the application meets the town's requirements for final amended site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Are there any? None? Okay.
What do you mean?
Where you're going to get to.
What do you mean? You're going to get to them.
It says, no, because then it says now therefore be it resolved.
Right. Subject to the following conditions.
Then the conditions run to.
The following conditions, okay. Certainly, okay, little change in terminology, sorry, sorry, you know, I'm a creature of habit.
Keep going, Mike, you're good. Keep going.
Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues a special permit for caretaker residence.
You're almost there.
I guess I deserved it. The following conditions. One, certification that all items in the original site plan approval have been complied with. Two, the proposed caretaker residence is to be used only by an employee of Foster Road Professional Park. Three, is the caretaker residence is located in the B1 zone. Any change to the exterior of the building must come before the A R B.
Anything else we need to add?
Just a quick question. If the practice should change hands, then in that event, what happens to?
Well, this condition runs with the property, so it still has to be an employee of whatever.
Whatever entity.
So if there's a change, if there be a change, this use has to come to the planning board, so that'll be addressed then.
But as long as it's the same use, then it carries.
Yeah.
Okay.
So does condition number two get changed to for subsequent owners? Or anything?
As long as they're doing the same.
Since, to address Scott's comment.
For subsequent property owner?
Or just change it to the owner?
Property owner.
Of same use, of similar use.
Yeah.
Okay. Used by an employee of the owner.
I just know some of these practices are getting bought up by large practices.
If they're changing the use, that has to come before us anyway, though, Scott.
I'm sorry?
If they're changing the use of the property, that has to come before us.
No, but it's, I know some of the smaller practices are being bought by the larger practices, just so they don't have to come back. As long as it's clear in here that if they get bought by a larger practice, they can continue this use.
Or subsequent owners with similar use.
Right.
Subsequent owner with similar use, got it. Okay. Okay. Any other changes? Okay, Mike?
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Craig, and votes as follows. John Cutler?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just bear with me, I'm sorry. All right, the next item on our agenda, where it was a public hearing for Hart Shorten II, and per our agenda notes, the applicant has actually requested that we reschedule. They did not advertise for this public hearing, and we will be rescheduling it at such time as they're prepared for, to move forward. So we won't be opening that, that matter. And then the last item on our agenda tonight, Michelle, I'm hoping I can trouble you to just walk us through, we do have a referral from the town law for a proposed local law that'll establish a moratorium.
And I'm actually going to defer to Tom on this one, because he knows more about it than I do.
Okay. Terrific. Sorry, Tom, I should have asked you first.
So the town board has scheduled a public hearing for next Thursday, September 27, at the John J. High School, and that will be their regular board meeting. But the first item on the agenda is a local law that, if adopted, would impose a moratorium for a period of nine months on any new development in any industrial zone property in the town of East Fishkill that does not abut Interstate I-84. A moratorium is a timeout, so that suspends development for that nine-month period, and that will allow the town board to engage the services of planning experts to analyze the permitted uses in those zones and the appropriateness of whether or not those zones should continue in their same form. I think this board, most members of the board will recall, you wrestled with a parcel that was zoned industrial, that was at, on the Teconic State Parkway and Hosner Mountain Road, and people came in, tried to develop industrial, just didn't work there. Then it was rezoned to a B use, didn't work, and finally ended up being residential. So just like that parcel, there are others in the town that I call them kind of sleeping. They're on the map, they're zoned, and no one really thinks about it until a use comes in that perhaps isn't appropriate. Because when the town originally was zoned in the 60s, and the map was originally created, these zones were placed in areas that were less densely populated, et cetera. But if you look at many of them, like Ryan Drive, that industrial site is surrounded by residences, and unfortunately, because of the contamination there, all the wells were polluted. So these are things that the town board thinks should be considered, and with an eye towards perhaps changing some of them, maybe modifying some of the uses. So under town law, the town board has to refer this, not only to this board, but to the county planning department and all the communities surrounding us for comments, issues, and recommendations. So that's why it's before you tonight.